Let the minute taker please take the roll.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley. Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Zizmarski. Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here. Claror Quorum, next I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of January 25th, 2018.
Make that motion.
Second.
We have any questions or corrections? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes, next report and recommendation, White Oaks Park Partnership. Mr. Murmurs, are you gonna take that, sir?
Sure.
Oh, nice.
Thank you, Alderman Woods. I won't, well, I'll be brief.
That's nice also.
Okay. Before you, some information, it's not new information, it's the PowerPoint presentation from the last time when Mr. Elman came in and presented the project. Staff was directed to ask the council if they had any further questions stemming from the presentation he gave last time, and then circulate the answers to the council. In your memo, you'll find that we had four questions, and Mr. Elman was nice enough to give us the answers to those questions. You can expand on those tonight, or answer any other further questions you have, but the thought process tonight was to provide some direction to staff and to the Park District as far as what type of partnership we're looking at. Tonight would just be the first step if we're looking at a partnership. We would obviously need to fine tune an IGA, which would have quite a few parameters in there, I'm sure, but the Park District at this point, and everybody really involved with our budgeting process kinda needs to know some sort of number, if any number at all, where we're going tonight. So there's really no new presentation here tonight. Matt's here, just to answer any questions that may come up, and that's really about it, and Matt, if you had anything to add.
Is there any? Mayor, please.
So, I know one of the questions that came up was residents of Wooddale, and I see that you would see us agreeing to making all residents of Wooddale, not just the Park District, get those discounts when residents are, right? Is that correct?
Yeah, I think we could spell that out in the IGA, to make sure that that's a contingency of things relative to the use of the site. Not just the aerial challenge course, but other components in the use of the site.
Alderman Messina.
Was there a fee discussion yet on residents first, well, residents first just the regular public? If they would be discounted?
Edge Adventures has indicated there will be no difference between a resident and non-resident, they have a price point that's set. As far as our programs that we might put in the building, and/or on the site, like camps and stuff, it's program by program. It can really vary. We have kind of a fee program that we evaluate who is the beneficiary in the end, if it's an individual, like somebody taking yoga class, it's very individualized. Obviously, there's a fee associated that's not really necessarily tax-supported, but if we do a big event, you know, then it might be free, or have much lower because it's a community benefit. But we would treat the parameters of who your residents are in that fee structure as our residents, as relates to this site.
Alderman Messina.
I know I had a few residents reach out and talk about, you know, how exciting it could be if they could have like a party there, right? So I thought this is an opportunity, a revenue generating opportunity for that group. It's a little disappointing to hear that they're not willing to entertain that. As I know, a lot of these groups, there are a lot of residents, I'm saying a lot, but these specific residents looked forward to hosting parties and thought that, hey, they're in Wooddale. In their minds, all they're seeing is Park District, they're not seeing this underlying entity, third-party operator running the business, so hopefully it's something they can consider down the road, is my only thought.
Can you help me better understand that position? I mean, when you say "party," or what their expectations are, I'm not sure I'm clear on that, and I could try to answer that, if I have a better understanding of...
Go ahead.
Yeah, so they would pay the same fee as the paying public, right? I guess they felt that, why couldn't they be viewed as a resident of Wooddale?
In terms of using the aerial challenge course?
Of using the facility and saying, "I'm gonna host my child's party here." Hey, this is Wooddale Park District. In their minds, they're seeing Wooddale Park District, and this party's gonna entail maybe some of your facility stuff, but then ultimately going out to Edge Adventures to round out the day, you know, with their friends, right? So just again, hoping to see or hear that Edge Adventures would have been open to some type of discount for residents to encourage local birthday parties, bachelor parties, and whatever, just something to get the community engaged.
Till this point in time, they've been willing to have certain dates, or certain times a year, they would allow kind of some community benefit pricing, but as a regular ongoing, they have not, they've not indicated support for that. We're still in negotiations, so, you know, and things can continue to be evaluated with them, but obviously, they're investing almost a million dollars in this site, so I think they owe it to their investors to try to get that return, and have a program for how many years it'll take to get that return, and as a result, you know, if they give too many discounts, I guess, that, then they have trouble getting those investors, is what's being explained to me.
That's fair.
Mayor, please.
My understanding is that really there isn't resident and non-resident price for the aerial park, correct?
Correct.
So it's, everybody's the same price, but over here, it states four to six times per year, whatever you guys agree upon, that's when there would be the resident discount that weekend or that week.
Correct.
So it's not like everybody, there's different price for resident and non-resident, like some of the items that are already at the Park District, you have resident and non-resident type deals, it's different. And then as far as the building itself, you guys control that, and that would be your deal, not Edge Adventures.
Correct, we would be in full control of that, and we would envision the IGA spelling out what those parameters would be in terms of what the city would be expecting or needing from the facility, you know, and I think there's a lot of possibilities with that, but if you wanted to use it for city-based events, or functions, or meetings, you know, we would gladly put that as a criteria in the IGA.
Mayor, please.
Yeah, I just, so like Alderman Messina was just talking, like some mom wants to have the son or daughter's party there, but also wants to rent the room. Aerial Edge Adventures is one price, that's, and then you guys, they would, and it wouldn't be, if they live in town, within the city limits, let's say, then, my understanding is that they would be getting the same as a resident of the Park District boundary, right? For that building.
Correct, and we would have a fee structure for rentals of the building, or programs that take, and it would probably be, you know, Park District slash City of Wooddale, and then, you know, corporate.
Then non-resident type, right.
Right.
Somebody outside, like Villa Park, somebody wants to come to Edge Adventures, that would be the non-resident type deal.
Mr. Murmurs.
Just for clarity, so I think what Alderman Messina is asking is that if a mom wants to have a kid's birthday party, and is a Wooddale resident, as part of the IGA, if the city requests a lower rate for Wooddale residents for our component, that we could work that in, but we can't control the Edge Adventures component.
That is correct.
And for the building, but not?
Yeah, the building, not the Edge Adventure part, right?
That's right.
Are there any other questions? So, Mr. Murmurs, what are we looking for this evening?
We are looking for some direction on a monetary amount if we want to partner with the Park District, and then once we get the monetary amount, over X amount of years, Brad and I can then plug that into our CIP and our budget, and we would work it out through a developing IGA, so this would probably, the IGA would obviously come back to committee, and the IGA would incorporate the numbers, no doubt. We just need a framework to start the IGA, and a framework for the budget for this hypothetical number.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Jeff, when you say from the CIP, some of this could come out of hotel tax, too.
Mr. Murmurs.
Well, I said CIP on the budget, the tourism fund's part of the budget, so we just need a number, we have no number for anything right now.
Okay.
Alderman Messina.
So I'd like to make a motion to, I guess we'd call it, grant the Park District 1.5 million dollars, subject to an IGA review by the council afterwards.
And is that over a certain period of time?
Oh, excuse me, over three years, over three years.
Over three years.
Excuse me. That is my motion.
Suck at that motion.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
So I guess the question to Brad is, how is that gonna affect the CIP over three years?
Mr. Wilson, would you like to come up and, oh, Mr. Murmurs, do you want to take that?
I was able to speak with Finance Director Wilson many a times about this project, and many different hypotheticals with numbers, there were many numbers being thrown around there. I think that amount is doable, but only over a number of years, so it's doable.
When you say number of years, three?
Three is...
Four, five?
Three is...
What number are you looking at?
I think three would be appropriate.
Alderman Messina.
This question is actually for another Alderman that is not in, not here today, but his question was essentially, a good question that I didn't write down.
I'm sure he's gonna be very happy with that.
Pass me, sorry.
All right, Mayor, please.
I don't know what I wrote.
So I just wanna make sure, so at one point, we were talking almost two mil, 1.5, this will get Edge Adventures up and running, right, on time?
That's what, yeah.
That's, right with this 1.5, that should...
Mr. Elman.
At this point, we have kind of planned for two phases. The first phase to include the parking lot, the building, and the pathways, and support systems for Edge Adventures, and then leaving all balance of the work to the second phase. So yes, that would accommodate Edge Adventures and have the parameters for them to agree to come in and build what they would commit to, correct?
The building and Edge Adventures, good to go. Perfect.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Matt, if the city were to decide not to put up one penny, do you have another option available to you?
Our back and default plan is to seek some grants, which are not highly likely, but to basically phase it in over a much longer period of time, and to scale back the building, and obviously, we would probably be doing a smaller building, a smaller parking lot, and that's about it in the first phase. Then, we do have debt retiring in a number of years, I can't tell you exactly how many 'cause I don't recall, but, you know, maybe five years from now, so we'd probably be looking at a delay for at least five years.
Thank you.
Alderman Messina.
Yeah, I remember my question, it kinda ties into what Alderman Sorrentino asked, it was essentially, that range without assistance was about seven to 10 years, I know you guys were hesitant to give a number, this would help shave off a few years, essentially, the three to four-year range to build with our assistance to scale?
Mr. Elman.
Correct, I think the funding number that's been thrown out here would give us the capability of doing the first phase and some, and then secondarily is, once we retire some debt and/or find other funding sources through grants or sponsorships, we would address this as we are able. And we will still seek those sources regardless, but, you know, they're a little more challenging to locate these days.
Sure, Alderman Messina, follow.
Say it like he would. So let me ask you a question, okay? You're not gonna be coming back here in a year from now, asking me for more money, when, you know...
You do that well.
When there's an overage, or, you know, we get a change order, 'cause I don't wanna sit here and have you ask me for more money in a year. Can you comment on that?
Absolutely, and it's not a, it's a question I'm often asked by my own park board. You know, it's our responsibility to do our due diligence to either modify scope, or find other ways around, rather than just go back to the till. I will be transparent in telling you, though, that I work for the district, and I work for the board, so, you know, if they ask me to do something, and that means come back to the city, obviously, I would do it, but that is not our objective, that is not our default, you know, we need to find ways. We have limitations, just like you do, we have to live within our means, so we have to find other things, but we have to be good communicators and transparently say, you know, it's not gonna be, the building's not gonna be as big, or there's going to be some lesser scale products used, but that's not, and we've been pretty aggressive and liberal in some of our factoring and our contingencies, knowing that we don't wanna be ever having to say we don't have enough. So I think we've built in some cushion and comfort there. So hopefully, that answers your question, and hopefully, that gives you some comfort, that that's...
I think it'll give him some comfort. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and I think the motion was to commit up to 1.5 million.
Not to exceed amount.
Not to exceed amount, and spread over three years, and that staff would start working with Park District staff, and working out the IGA and the details of how that all worked out, and how that money was filtered and paid out. Mr. Murmurs.
Correct, and we'll have at least one committee meeting talking about terms of the IGA.
Okay. All right, so Alderman Catalano.
Yeah, so when we negotiate the four to six times, a special discount for the residents, can we push for six times?
Absolutely, that's my plan.
Okay, Mr. Murmurs.
I would say as part of this deal, when we become a partnership, I would expect you guys would feel comfortable with, you know, the city staff is gonna be attending some of the stuff with you, I would assume, so when you're saying push for six, it's not just gonna be the Park District pushing for six, since we'd be partners, you know, we would be there pushing for six as well.
Correct, okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, roll call.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
I'm gonna abstain, hopefully I could explain why later.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes. That passes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next items to be considered at future meetings, Thorndale Corridor, 2018, to be determined, is there anything else anybody would like? Not seeing anything, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.
Public Health, Safety, Judiciary, and Ethics Committee is called order. Let the minute taker note that the same council people are still present and accounted for. I need approval of the minutes of the meeting of January 25th, 2018, at 7:30 PM.
I make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that passes. Chief, would you bring us up to date on this replacement of squad? I won't say 54, where are you? Squad number 403.
Thanks, we're looking for approval to replace a 2014 utility interceptor vehicle. Just as an update to council, what we have been able to do is push these cars out to almost four years now. This one will be approaching four years by the time it's turned over, it's already at 41 months, but the cars have been more reliable, the costs of repairs have kept down, and we're certainly happy with the SUV vehicle. The one that would be replaced, we're gonna be able to continue to keep in the fleet to replace the vehicle that we use over at Fenton High School, 'cause that one's, I think, 10 years old now, and we do like to have a visible squad over there. So the one that we would be replacing would not go away, but we would anticipate we could probably get another five or six years out of it, using it at Fenton. So we're looking to replace with a new identical vehicle, and the not exceed amount of 27,244 through Currie Motors, and that's a competitive bid through the Northwest Municipal Conference.
Any questions? I'm sorry.
I make that informal motion not to exceed over 27,224 dollars.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any questions? Take a roll call, please, Alderman.
A quick question. I know there was a scorecard, right, that helps determine, but, I mean, if I remember right, I think I wrote it down, was it 70, it only had 75,000 miles, and I know in our simple world, we look at that and say, "That's not that bad," but can you talk to that? I mean, it doesn't seem like it's 70 miles.
Sure, a couple parts of that. These vehicles do spend a large amount of time idling, just because of, you know, not while we're at the station, or not occupying, but even just being around throughout town, so the engine hours are considerably more. It does have a vehicle score from the vehicle garage of 65%, and so it is going down, and we're also going to be holding on to the replacement vehicle, so, and, you know, just as a clarification, we don't come to you just because we had it in the budget to replace this year, we're actually holding off one vehicle, and we've readjusted our vehicle replacement schedule for the upcoming budget, to push all these back a little bit. So we continually have a year, and we work with the vehicle garage closely to make sure we're not just replacing just 'cause it's on the schedule, so we're actually delaying the replacement of one vehicle this year.
Thank you.
Any more questions? I've got a motion and a second, Ellen, could you give a roll call for that, please?
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes. Any items to be considered at future meetings? No? Oh, good, I could talk then. Good to be chairman. A couple of things, I, was that a function when they opened up the new dispatch center, and I heard the mayor from Addison in his speech, really hit me between the eyes, when he said that the primary purpose of government is safety. So as chairman of the public safety, the purpose of my abstention was that a million five over three years could help light up the city. And I think it would be monies better used for the safety of our residents, and the safety of the city, and also coupled with the fact that the mayor and I had a meeting with the resident, and I have to say, Mayor, you truly impressed me that day. We had to sit there and tell a resident that because of our budget, we could not do or even start to think about what his concern was, and the mayor, very diligently, went through all the streets in the city of Wooddale, it had to do with water mains, and explained to the resident that there is just no money for this particular project, and it's pretty much as needed basis. So I don't know if that resident's watching this evening, but if there are any other residents of the same concerns or needs, to hear us throw a million five at a recreational facility, which I'm all about keeping kids safe and structured, I think we may have pulled the trigger a little too quick on that, but I just wanted to explain my abstention, and you've always heard me barking and complaining, and I know tonight, someone, some people deserve a huge compliment. So Alderman, hold on to your chairs. I would like to compliment the staff, as well as the management of our Georgetown Square. The lights have all been on, they look beautiful, it looks like Wrigley Field in a night game. So that's a good thing, I thank you, all of you that have been participating with the management company there, but they set a stellar reputation, and they raise the bar for all our other business owners when it comes to lights. And if they could just plow on time now, I'd be really happy. That's all I have to say. Safety first, gang. Anything else? I need a motion to adjourn. Or I could talk, I'll be Mr. Shit.
I'll make that motion.
Quick second.
Thank you. Get done.
All in favor? Aye, aye.
I'd like to call the Public Works meeting. Please note that the same council members are present. Next, I need approval of the minutes of the Public Works regular meeting, January 11th, 2018.
Second.
Any corrections? Will in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is report and recommendation for approval of contract with HR Green for landscape and enhancements at the city hall, in the amount not to exceed $8,670, that is my motion.
Second.
Any questions? Alderman Roy Wesley.
Matt, we would, I don't know who wants to take it, Jeff or Matt. We talked about some landscaping over by the Veterans Memorial, and we were talking about the flame that you, the eternal flame that you can't not see going from west to east. You can only see it going from east to west. So I know we talked about some landscaping then, and when are we gonna... Okay. I'll let him answer, and then...
Go ahead.
Yeah, we actually, I remember this, I think it came up during CIP discussions, the thought process was that we wanted to complete the intersection work on the northeast corner of the intersection, and the clock tower corner of the intersection, to see how that worked with the hardscape, with the plantings, and then to maintain consistency, then work that stuff into the treatment plant project, which is why in the CIP, we put the treatment plant landscaping project that you're referencing in the following year, after we finish the other landscaping. Both those landscaping projects are unrelated to this agenda item.
It just seems kinda odd that you, we've been talking about that for, what, three years now?
Go ahead.
It's not odd, I'll tell you that the council couldn't make up their mind when we first started talking about it, there was a lot of different options out there, and a lot of different ideas, and this is what we landed on.
Follow up?
No. That's it.
Alderman Jacob.
Just a request, well, when we are doing things like this, if we could maybe have some like before and after pictures for residents in the newsletter, so they could see what we've done to the city hall, and what we're doing, I think it would be nice if we could do something like that.
Mayor.
I think we already started doing that with the new hire, he's been starting to put out pictures of before and after construction projects and whatnot, I know he's been gathering some photos and whatnot, so we're starting, and he's gonna start working on some new videos, 'cause I asked him today when I saw him.
Any more questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next is approval of purchase of the decorative ballad as part of the city hall exterior aesthetic improvement project. Matt, you gotta, wanna touch on this?
Yeah, I've got a quick presentation to show you about this, okay. So the ballards at city hall, these lovely white contraptions that we have in the front, in the rear of the building, they don't really meet the current theme that we're trying to do of prairie-style lighting, so that's what they really look like now. So we, in the budget for this year, we have money set aside for the city hall landscaping project, one of the things that we thought to do was to replace the ballards, to kinda give it more, tie it in with the theme of the prairie style. So we have three different options to look at. So option one, so in option one, two, and three, that's the ballard that we're really going for, it's the prairie-style ballard, it's gonna mimic the prairie lights that we have, and really, all that we're changing is the, is this area here. So this first area here is the black post with the prairie-style glass, which is very similar to the ones that are in the prairie lights right now. The second option is a, is a metal plate with a leaf cutout in it, and we can, options A, B, or C, so it'd be one of those three options. A is a leaf with some of the ribs of the leaf in it. The problem with these are, they have to be connected to this, this is metal, so this black part's metal, and this is a cutout, so anything has to be touching other pieces of metal. So the B1 would just be the center rib, and then the C1 would be the open leaf. And then option three is an acrylic piece of plexiglass with the... And then option three is an acrylic piece of plexiglass with the full leaf logo that you guys have on your lovely new nameplates, also the same one that's on the street name signs. So this would be an acrylic slide-in that would go in and replace of this metal material here. With that being said, option one, the, this one just here would be seventeen thousand five hundred. Option two, twenty thousand dollars would be for the three, or one, pick, if we'd want to do the metal one, we'd have to pick which one of those three we'd like, or option three is the acrylic.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for option three. That's my motion.
Second.
Any questions?
Yep.
Alderman Jacob?
Option two, so, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this clearly. So it's going to be metal, where the leaf is, there's actually no glass or plexiglass or anything, it's just open, so somebody could put their hands in there, touch the lights, I mean, they could do...
Yeah, it's an open material, could they touch the light? Okay. Is it LED light? Yeah, so it's not going to hurt them or anything, it's, you know, low wattage, low heat. But the issue that I have and the why I don't like this one very much is if this gets damaged, this, I had a feeling this won't last long, or this one, because this will get bent and it'll be turned this way, or it wouldn't look right. This one has no character, so I would, I'd be, I'm very hesitant with option two, that's my own opinion.
Go ahead, follow up.
Yeah, the only other thing I want to say, besides it being open, I mean, you've got the weather elements, so like today it's snowing, I mean, you're going to get snow in there, so that's why I would be against that option.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, a couple things. So one, I think that we could actually do a better selection. I saw this, unfortunately, I was busy all week, I wasn't, I wanted to get some, bring some stuff to look at. Actually, these lights are in Elk Grove, if you go to their town center behind where the Dominics used to be, they have them in green going down the road, and while they don't look terrible, I don't think they look that great. And the other issue is that because we're being so literal that we want to match everything, that I think that we're getting too matchy. I would, actually, if I could bring something forward, I mean, if we could look at it at the council meeting as an option, I mean, I just think that we could do a lot better without being so matchy, matchy, and we could still keep the prairie style, same company. They have a bunch of different options, so that's my comment.
Alderman Messina?
With the option three with the acrylic, I'm assuming there's replacement parts that cracks?
Yeah, the acrylics are slide-ins, so, yeah, so if they crack, we just pop the top, pull the cracked one, slide a new one in.
And like you said, in the holidays, you can change those, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, we thought also with, I mean, with any of them, but with the LEDs lighting, obviously, red, green LED lights in there, you know, give a little festive charm to it. We could do that with any of them, but some of, you know, this one has probably the most surface area for color to come through as well. I mean, we talked about lighting and safety, so obviously, these are decorative, but they also serve a purpose.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Thank you. Could you go back to option one, please? Now, this, although it may appear plain, building on what Alderman Woods had said, you know, I understand we're doing branding, but, you know, it's like you carry away with those leaves. This, in my opinion, it kind of follows, follows suit on the clock tower in the train station, and, I don't know, I would like to have seen more, but, you know, I personally prefer this over the any of those. These are sealed, right? So what do you have to say, Mr. York?
Go ahead, Mr. York.
Okay, well, two things, I guess. One, yeah, they're sealed, so, I mean, they're, it's a closed, it's a closed system. The second part is, with the third option, while today the leaf is kind of the go-to, if we change that or want to do something different with something in the future, the acrylic slide-ins obviously are not extremely expensive to produce and change, whereas the metal ones are, that's what you're going to get, and that's how it's made, it's made that way. So they won't be able to be modified at all. So if we did want to go with the acrylic ones, in five years or ten years, a different set of Aldermen, if we're not all here, one big heavy family still, wants to change things, which we know things get changed at times, we could slide those out and put whatever the newest and greatest thing is in its place.
Follow up, go ahead.
So, option one, then, just a piece of prairie-style glass that can't be altered, changed, modified?
This, this right here is metal, so there's a piece of glass behind it, but this is the metal that's, so that's how it's, that's how it's built, is with that metal, that, those open spots are just cut out.
So these, well, these options two and three, those logos would be, one or behind them?
They would slide, this metal would be gone, and they would slide in, so it'd be flush with, or just recessed just a little bit.
Mr. Rivers?
Obviously, if this isn't a slam dunk and we don't have a strong consensus, this isn't a time-sensitive issue, we can go back and get more examples. We have plenty of time, this is a small project, so if Alderman Woods has more ideas, or Alderman Sorrentino or anybody, we have plenty of time for this project.
Alderman Jacob?
Well, the one thing with option three, too, kind of like you said, I mean, down the road, we could even for holidays, like maybe instead of the leaf, put a Christmas tree there or something, I mean. So there's other things we could do with this option, and we did just spend a ton of money on rebranding and redoing our leaves, so I don't see a whole heck of a lot of leaves around City Hall, so I think it would look nice to have that at City Hall.
Mayor?
I only have one concern, being that this is four foot tall. How solid are these, like at the top, because I know the kids are walking up and down the street to the pool or wherever they're going, and I know kids are going to be kids, and they're going to be banging on that top and whatnot. Is that something that's going to pop off, and are the corners really sharp? You know, because kids are always clawing around, and I can see them, you know, giving it a high five as they're walking by.
Mr. York?
While I'm not going to say they're indestructible, they don't, I, we've looked at these at the Sternberg locale, they aren't sharp corners, they're flatter corners. Can they be destroyed? Anything can be destroyed, so I don't think there's an indestructible logic out there that we're going to do unless we want to put, you know, concrete and reinforce it with barbed wire on the outside of it to keep people away from it.
That's for the clock tower.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, the second biggest thing here is that, as we go down this road, we're kind of tying ourselves into this light fixture, which is why I want to look at some more options and say that there's some better available options, at least in my opinion. When you guys see them, you might disagree, but at least I'd like everybody to be able to see them, because we're going to put up more of these, and they don't necessarily lend themselves as well around City Hall as they would maybe at the memorial or other locations that we would put the boullard. So, you know, you kind of got to be careful when you're locking into that prairie style, we just see that light fixture, and we want to keep repeating it and repeating it and repeating it, and sometimes that works, and sometimes it's just a complete flop, so I, that's...
So I'll amend my motion if, you know, bring more to the table, if the secondary agrees?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. And, go ahead, Alderman Jacob?
I did have a question on the boullards we have, how long have they been out there? Do we know?
Go ahead.
Those have been out there for quite some time. My guess is at least twenty years, Greg, maybe more, probably thirty years.
And my second question with that, I noticed sometimes in the summer, I mean, you'll notice that a lot of those are really loose, and that kind of goes to what the mayor, is that from people hitting them, or is that just because they're old and they're not sturdy anymore, or why are they loose in the summer a lot?
Go ahead.
Well, I mean, all right, so when you put a boullard in the ground, basically what you're doing is you're printing concrete, and you're putting bolts coming through the concrete, you're adhering the new boullard to that concrete. So over the course of time, as the boullards get played with or hit or whatever, they're going to become looser, and you're going, and like anything else, you can only tighten it up so much. When, sooner or later, you're going to have to replace the actual structural part of this, which is something that we would have to do with the new one. So anything new that we would get, we would rip that, rip out everything totally and put a whole new base in that would allow it to hopefully stay in one piece and in one place for a long period of time. But in ten or fifteen or twenty or thirty years down the line, the ones that are tight today aren't going to be as tight later.
Alderman Wesley?
Matt, how many lights are we talking about for seventeen?
Ten.
I believe it's ten.
Okay. All right. Art says he wanted to bring some more samples in. I make a motion to table and bring it back at another committee meeting.
We already did that.
Yeah, but they didn't make a motion to put it to...
They did, they agreed, secondary agreed.
So when are we going to talk about it, then?
No, that's it. One more question, and then, that's it.
Well, he was talking about bringing it up at a council meeting, that's why.
Well, I...
We'll bring it forward at a new committee meeting, I think that's where everybody's at.
I was trying not to be obstructionist, so it down, because I want to move forward. But, you know, so I was willing to do some work and get the samples and pictures and stuff and have it at the council meeting.
Well, that's, that's why I'm saying I don't want to talk about it at the council, I'd rather talk about it at the committee first.
Right. Okay, yeah.
So I just want to make clear that it's going to be done at the committee.
That's the way it works, right? It goes to committee, we get new samples. Alderman Messina?
Without making the project more complicated, have we thought about, myself at least feel like there should be some type of seating, have we thought about a bench of any sort?
Go ahead.
Okay, so the first thing that you guys voted on tonight was for additional design work to be done on the landscaping portion of it. All right, so the boullards, the easiest thing to do is put the boullards back where the boullards are, because then we don't have to worry about electrical and running new wires and all that kind of stuff. So to take those out and put those back in would kind of be the, an initial phase one of the redo of the landscaping, and then we'll have plans to, after we get sign off on the addendum that you guys assigned, approved earlier, we'll come back with new renderings and finish up the drawings and get those out to, to people to actually do that work, and in that, and in that part of it will be the other things that are involved.
Okay, then, go ahead. One more question, Mr. Woods?
Well, just to follow up on Alderman Messina's question, I mean, so that was part of something that we were putting together or trying to put together, that standards book, as we work on the roads and the street signs, and what is a street sign, what is a wayfinding sign, what is a monument sign, and within that was, was and should be, what is a boullard in the city, and what is a bench, and what is a bike rack, and what is a garbage can, and other furniture, what is planters, so that when we decide that we want to do something, we're not recreating the wheel every time we do it, and H.R. Green's landscape architect likes different stuff than Robinson's landscape architect, you know, that were consistent. That was the one thing that we've been pushing, so, thank you.
Okay, so we've got a first and a second to table it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next items to consider for future meetings, engineering standards March twenty-second, and urban park streetlights went to spring. Any other items to consider for future meetings? Nope? Then I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, we adjourned.
I'd like to call the Finance and Administration Committee meeting to order. Please have the minute taken or note, the same people are present. First up, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the last Finance and Administration Committee meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, sir. Roll call, okay. Roll call, please. For all in favor, Brad?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Important recommendation, police pension funding policy, pass it over to you, Brad.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So a number of you were in attendance, I believe it was two weeks ago, when the actuary from Lauterbach and Amen was here, and went through a lot of the police pension funding, the methodology, the actuarial study, whatnot, and one of the things that came up was that the city had never formally approved those methodologies, which they put into place back in April of two thousand and twelve, and have been using that ever since. We did talk about them, and, you know, everybody kind of agreed to them, but there was never like a resolution passed to formally adopt them. So it's a best practice, you know, to give the pension fund comfort to continue moving on in that manner, the actuaries, and also, to a limited degree, part of our bond rating score is based upon pension funding methodology as well. So kind of hit pension fund, the actuaries, and the bond rating companies would all really see this as a best practice and something that should be memorialized. And as Ms. Fane said, that way, you know, future councils, you know, would take a lot, take a lot of work to do something different than what the current council has laid out there. So this would memorialize those practices, and like I said, kind of give comfort to those three different agencies all at the same time. So it's a best practice and something that, you know, personally, we should, we should look to do. And like I said, it's nothing that hasn't been done for the last seven years, it's just putting a vote to it.
So you're looking for direction from us on, like a motion, rather?
Correct, yes.
To formalize?
Yes, sir.
I'm making a motion to formalize the full pension fund.
Second.
Now, is that a motion to formalize the methodology?
Memorialize it.
Memorialize it, okay, all right, okay. And we have a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Thanks, Brad. Anything else to add?
Nope.
Good, okay. Items to be considered at future meetings, fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, on February twenty-second, important day, bring snacks, bring water and coffee. Master fee schedule on March eighth. Any other items to consider? All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.